What's going on chuckleheads? I am Carlo Guadino. This is Dingo Talk. My guest this week, not an alumni of Bethany College, although he was here for a concert in 2004 to see Lloyd Banks, Daniel Dudley, class of 2008 from WVU. Radio extraordinaire, as we're gonna find out. I mean, I'm a MTV rock and jock kid. So like just putting sports and music together is like everything for me.
ESPN had our podcast. We had a podcast on ESPN, Radio Disney Sports. We were working with ESPN, a lot of things. Like we shot a pilot for Radio Disney Sports. It was awesome. And this is the lesson for anybody listening, like knowing people is important, you know?
What's going on chuckleheads? I am Carlo Guadino. This is the Dingo Talk Alumni Tour. My guest this week is Ken Beto, class of 1977. Newly selected Chair of the Board of Trustees. He's gonna tell us a little bit of sneak peek into what's coming in the future and what some plans are for Bethany. He's also gonna tell us how I got here from Bellevue High School, but without further ado, this is Ken Beto. What's going on chuckleheads? I am Carlo Guadino. This is the Dingo Talk Alumni Tour. My guest this week is Ken Beto, class of 1977. Ken, thank you very much for being on the show.
Carlo, it's a pleasure to talk to you. I've loved your podcast and you know, some of my old friends and some new friends.
I appreciate you watching. So you know, we're gonna do it the same way we do every week. You get the chance to tell us how a kid from Pittsburgh found his way to the northern panhandle of West Virginia. And we'll talk about all this stuff that you did here. Take a break, come back and we'll do comps and everything you're doing since. So how did you end up coming from Bellevue High School to Bethany?
Well, I've been a Bethanian, Carlo, all my life. Both my parents were Bethanians and I'm the oldest in the family. Gosh, where do I start? They got there very different ways. I'll start with my dad. He grew up in the suburb of Wellsburg by the name of Beach Bottom. And went to Wellsburg High School and graduated in 1939. And Beach Bottom, for those that know, was a company town owned by Willie Steele. They owned the houses, the store, the mill, everything. In fact, that town didn't even have a mayor till 1955. And so War II breaks out. He joins the Marine Corps, fought in the Pacific and had this dream to say, you know what? There's probably more that I can do in my life than work for Willie Steele and decides to go to Bethany College. So he enters Bethany College as a freshman in 1946. And my mother, who was seven years younger, graduated from, of all things, Bellevue High School. I grew up in the same house she did. So not a lot of imagination in my family. She was actually gonna go to Penn State, but our other next door neighbor, name was Al Carey, a Bethanian. In fact, he was the first Bethanian inducted into the Athletic Hall of Fame, says to my grandfather, her dad saying, listen, there's a place down in West Virginia you might want to take a look at. He was worried about sending his daughter up to state college. And so she goes to Bethany and they meet there and get married and graduate in 1950. And a few years later, I'm born. So like I said, I've known about Bethany for all my life and homecomings and trips down there, football games, et cetera. So now for me personally, I was a student athlete. Bellevue High School had a pretty decent football program at the time. We were was class B considered at the time, probably second or third tier down from the different things. And I knew I enjoyed athletics, but I knew I was not that great, but good enough, I would say. And so I wanted to play football. So I looked at smaller colleges, Rose City, Westminster, were a few, Geneva. And so like a lot of your kids, I wanted to play football and Donald was the new head coach and he spent time with me. And so I decided to go to Bethany and and play football and major, who knew, you know, business, whatever they was appropriate at the time. But anyway, so between the connection of my family and knowing Bethany for years and years and years, and opportunity to play football, and that's why I chose Bethany College.
So then academically, Bethany was pretty stringent back then, still is, but I mean, it was.
Well, it's interesting. So like a lot of things, I think for most Bethanians you talk to, you find that there was a coach or a faculty member to really made a significant difference, you know, in your life. And you know, our class was a large class. I mean, arguably the largest class ever. I think we had close to 400 students in the class coming in. We had filled up every dorm space known to mankind. Those there, I think, in fact, it was sort of a, things were beginning to change at that point, too. The Vietnam War was over. All the things kids fought for. Drinking age was 18. It was pretty wide open. There were basically no rules. And I think the whole freshman class was put on probation. And so we kind of just kind of took this campus by storm. In fact, you know, the men lived in Moreland Hall, the women in Phillips, and it were just there. And I met a, I took an economics course my first semester because I thought I'm gonna be in economics. I took sensitivity to the natural world, world as freshman seminar with Jay Bakaloo. And I took a math course that, you know, just because you did, I guess. And and I just fell in love with the math department at Bethany College. Jim Allison was one of the professors there and John Atkins was the other. And you know, in those days, they didn't talk about learning disabilities, as we can tell by this conversation. I have a bit of ADD and I'm dyslexic. So math was actually a thing for me and just fell in love with that department. And in fact, we actually started the computer science department in 1975. So this was, you know, pioneering and early day stuff. It was fabulous. In fact, this is so Bethany. We had computers in the first floor of Richardson, but of course they had to have security to lock the building, but we need to get in at night to have access to the computers. So this is so Bethany, we'll leave the windows open for you.
So you guys are crawling the windows to go to the computer room?
Exactly.
So what was it about the math department? Was it the mixture of the students that were already there plus the faculty or?
The students. I mean, there was really bright kids there, obviously, in that department and the professors. And John Atkins, Jim Allison had passed away quite some time ago now. And but John Atkins actually ended up leaving Bethany, going and actually was one of the leading professors in computer science down at Morgantown at WVU. I really felt that for them, they gave you every chance to learn. I mean, every opportunity to learn, as much extra time as you needed to go through things. This is so, you know, Bethany spent time in their houses, if you, you know, just that if you need help, but time, the time to take the test, you did it or you didn't. So every opportunity to learn, but when the bell rang and to take a test, you know, you did it or you didn't. So that accountability was really, you know, I just, I just enjoyed that environment. The opportunities were great, but you had to prove yourself. You couldn't just, you know, skate by. You did it or you didn't.
When you said you came here to play football, you also ran track?
Yeah. So you know, football, I'll talk about that for a second. It was, you know, we had a lot of freshmen and, you know, candidate Bethany. And I, you know, I enjoyed it. In fact, I just, I played as a freshman. I started, you know, a bunch of games. And but after freshman year, I thought, I'm not sure I want to play football anymore. I want to move on and do other things. And I didn't play sophomore year. And then I, as I was throwing, I'm thinking to myself, you know, if I don't play Bethany, I'm never gonna play ever again. I'm like, you know, I'm not gonna become a pro or anything. So I talked to Coach Alt in the sort of the early spring semester of the sophomore year and said, listen, I'd like to come back out for football. And he was like, are you sure? Because don't jerk me around here type thing. And, and I said, I'd like to. He says, well, why don't you run track? And I was fast. I mean, I, for Bethany, let's put it that way. I ran 100 and the 200 and the relays and that kind of thing. And Mike Sherwood, who was his offensive coordinator, ran, you know, he was looking for track people. He said, why don't you run track and see how that goes? So that's why I ran track to get in the good graces of Coach Alt. And we did. And I actually, I never ran track in my life, ever, in high school or anything. And
Never something that you wanted to do. Running was the punishment, not the.
Exactly. Not the, not the, not the objective. But there was a whole set of different kind of athletes and track, individual sport. And, and we had, so I ran track and and then, you know, played, and actually, this is sort of toward the end of the season of that year. I tore the tendon between my big toe and my heel in a 100 meter race. It just ripped. And so I ended up, you know, on crutches, but I still said I wanted to play football and I did the rehabilitation. And 1975 came back and so junior went out for football. And that was a magic year because that was, you know, one of the years we won the PAC championship. And again, a bunch of great guys on that team. And it was fun. It was fun winning that championship. And so played junior year and senior year. So I sophomore year sabbatical and and did it. And just a bunch of great guys that just, you know, truly enjoyed it. And then track was fun, too. And though my senior year for track, you know, I was really thinking at that point, you know, getting a job, getting married, a lot of things in my mind, sort of growing up and comps. It was of course high on the list, too. And so I told the coach, I said, I really probably not gonna run track in the senior year. And he said, well, we kind of need you. And I said, okay, fine. But I said, I want you to understand graduating is my top priority. This track is, it's fun, but, but I said.
But I want to get out of here.
I gotta pass comps. And so we had a meet up in near Cleveland. And it's about a three hour drive, you know, from Bethany on a Saturday. And the school we were running against, they had some much faster athletes than me. And I called, I said before the meet, I said, listen, I'm not gonna go. I said, I can spend a whole Saturday studying. Or I can be a three hour ride up there, run two races, once 10 seconds, once 20 seconds and get beat. Or I can study. So I'm not gonna go. And I said, okay, fine. So that Saturday morning, you know, I'm living, where am I living? Part of the Fytal House. I get a, I get a call saying, where are you? I said, I told you, I wasn't gonna go. I.
I made it clear I wasn't coming.
I gotta study for comps. So, and not, you know, so no work records were broken, anything anyway. So make a long story short, I passed comps. And I was, they were shocked that I would actually not go to the meet so I can study.
Well, so you brought up Fytal. Was Greek life something that was always on your radar as well?
We were a lot of Greeks, you know, when I was a Bethanian. He was just, you know, a big part of the life. I think every pledge class, at least the men's classes, had 30 plus members, you know, there were the SAEs are on campus anymore. There were the Deltas, of course, the Alpha Siggs, the Sigma News, KAs, Betas. I mean, it was just people went Greek. And it was, you know, this whole people of our generation will talk about this, how Bid Day was just insanity. You went to these parties. It was, it was the early, you know, in February is when they did it. You go to these parties and then they decide who's gonna go to what fraternity that they vote you in. All the men were in Moreland Hall and they passed you these little envelopes and saying what fraternity you got in. And you ran outside and the other fraternity people were all there. And it was a bit insane. And it was a bit insane. In fact, in those days, too, they, people went to, you know, the dinner at the cafeteria, too. And they stopped that. They just said, okay, you can, don't, it was just.
Go to other places.
It was insane. And Bid Day was always a bit, a bit insane. And different time, different place. Like I said, the drinking age, too, at Bethany was 18. So it was just a different time.
So what was, what was the reason for choosing Fytal? Was that, that's just where you?
It was comfortable, I think. There was, there was fairly strong. I felt I needed some balance in academics. There's a lot of pre meds that were there. I'm, you know, I'm taking, I'm taking math. And they're, they're taking math as sort of like an intro course. I'm thinking, this is like, for me, this is a real thing. And so it was probably the academic part of it that appealed to me. I think I would have felt comfortable. I had great friends in the KAs, great friends in Sigma News, great friends in the Betas. The Delta, my roommate went, went down, the Delta house was right next to our house. You know, at least for the guys, I felt this is comfortable, you know, being in any of those other houses with those guys. And actually, I was the only football player that actually was in the Fytal. So I'm not sure how that worked out. But we talked to perspective, you know, Fytals, I'd say, well, you know, join the Fytals every, you know, we, everyone was, the place football starts. So.
Because there's only one.
Only one.
All right. Well, that's a good place to pause for part one. We're gonna take a break. We're gonna send it to KJ. Karen Dunn with Maple Shade Outdoors. If you haven't yet, get on Instagram, follow his page. Maple underscore shade dot outdoors. Or while you're watching this, hit like and subscribe. Finish this video. Go over to his page, follow or subscribe to his page, Maple Shade Outdoors. Everything you need, hunting, fishing, and all that rolled into one. But this is Ken Beto, class of 1977. I am Carlo Guadino and this is the Dingo Talk Alumni Tour. KJ, take it away.
What's going on everybody? This is Kieran Dunn, founder of Maple Shade Outdoors. If you're currently watching Dingo Talk with my man Carlo. If you're anything like me and you're really enjoying this content, you should like and subscribe his page. While you're on YouTube, you should probably just head over and like and subscribe Maple Shade Outdoors. Check out our page. Enjoy some videos, some outdoor content. You might as well hop on Instagram, Facebook, follow us, Maple Shade Outdoors. Now that's enough about me. I'm trying to get back and watch the rest of Dingo Talk. So I'll talk to y'all later.
What's going on chuckleheads? I am Carlo Guadino. This is the Dingo Talk Alumni Tour. My guest this week is Ken Beto, class of 1977. We left off with a bunch of the social aspects and the academic stuff from Bethany College. In town, I'm assuming Chambers General Store was there. And across the street, you had Bubba's or maybe it was Frank's at that time?
Yeah, it was actually, so that was, that was the Times Square of commercial business in Bethany. In fact, so you had, you know, you had the general store, but you also had Ethel's, which is sort of a store next, next to Chambers. And then, of course, you had Frank's, which is the bar. And across the street from that, actually, too, was the gas station that was owned by, gosh, one of the, one of the retired coaches. It was sort of gas by appointment. So if you wanted to get it, you could call ahead and arrange to get that. But the bar was, again, it was, was Frank's and Frank Calabrese. In fact, I just ran into Frank at the graduation a few weeks ago. And again, the drinking age was 18, it was wide open. And you know, it was interesting. I think being in West Virginia was 18, Pennsylvania, you grew up in Pennsylvania, it was 21. So my friends who went to college, you know, Rose City or Pitt or whatever, in Pittsburgh, they had to sneak around and try to do things. We just walked in the bar. And I think frankly, you became a bit more responsible with that process. It wasn't like you were a kid trying to sneak into something. In fact, I had worked at the Jersey Shore, too, when I was in college. I was 18 there. And you just, you did it. And it was not, not a big deal, you know, sort of, sort of European, I guess. You know, you're not sneaking anything. It's just, if you choose to, you do. If you don't, you don't.
And it's like you said earlier, it's the, it, one, it gives you that, that almost responsibility early. Like if that's what you're gonna do, be smart about it. But it's also a different time. I mean, you couldn't, I don't foresee the drink. I would love to see the drinking age go back down to 18, just, but I don't think it's, it's a good idea.
Again, understand that time, too. Vietnam was just winding down, too. So, so you know, there were kids fighting in Vietnam between 18 and, you know, less than 21. And they're saying, if you can fight in war, why can't you have a drink?
And an argument that still goes on to this day, if you can go serve.
Does. And, and we can talk about that. But I think if you make it a younger age, 18, you teach more responsibility. I think it's, you know, it's not like people aren't drinking, but it's just, let's be, let's be responsible about it and do that. So.
So you get to comps. How did studying go for comps?
Wow, you know, it was a bit, you know, it was unnerving, you know, it's like anything else. You have to remember things from the first class you took. So I remember taking, you know, calculus and calculus one, two, and three, my freshman and sophomore year. It seemed like a million years ago. And then you're taking abstract algebra and you're taking numerical analysis and all these math courses are not really related. But, you know, during these tests, there's, there's two comments I would make. One is, you know, we're in Steinman Hall taking the comps, the written part. And Joe Curry tapped me on the shoulder and says, what are you doing? I go, Joe Curry, of course, I think at that time, A, you know, he'd been Bethany forever, just whatever. But he was ran many things. It was treasure at one point. And, you know, he was a Fytal and I knew Joe and tennis coach, just a great guy. He goes, what are you doing? I go, finish the comps. He said, well, you're sitting, he goes, you're sitting close to another math major, you know, and like, like I'm cheating. I said, okay. I said, Joe, take a look at her books and my books. I said, I can assure you, she was number one in the class. If there's anything alike, it's a pure coincidence.
I got lucky.
It's a pure coincidence. And, and then, of course, the orals are fabulous. So in fact, so I, we had the oral, so I had the head of our department and one another math professor. And actually, a guy named Charlie Hall, who was the head of the economics department. I took a lot of courses from him. And he might have been a little annoyed that I wasn't an economics major. I really enjoyed economics. He was a very good teacher. But he decided to be the third professor in my comps. And so I'm sitting there and I'm answering questions. And actually, in math, you're, you're at the board. You're, you know, doing proofs against on the, on the blackboard and, and, you know, the chalk and everything. And so he asked me this question. And I didn't quite know the answer. I'm kind of fishing, that's kind of thing. And I'm looking at the other, like the math professors. In fact, there's another one in the back of the room that's sitting in. I'm looking, they're going, so it was sort of like, sort of a gotcha question, you know, it was like, I said, whatever it was on investments or something. Anyway, to make a long story short, I passed. My friends were out there with a quart of Iron City beer when I, when I finished. And, and then that evening, as a matter of fact, I mentioned to you earlier on, I had every job known to mankind at Bethany. I ran the intermural track meet. I was a math tutor. I worked as a waiter at the cafeteria. I gave tours to the admissions office. In fact, I would pick up students that flew in, prospective students from the airport, like at mileage. I mean, if there was a job to be had, I did it. I was, I was a night watchman at the infirmary. I mean, I just did every job. But anyway, that night, I was, I was umpiring baseball for Little League at the Town Field. I did that, too. And one of the professors was saying, I'm surprised you're sober because you just took comps, you know, this morning. I said, I had a beer at 10 o'clock. I'm fine now. And some lady started yelling at me, he's drunk. I said, trust me, I'm fine. It's fine. I can call balls and strikes for these eight year olds.
So from comps, where was the first step of adult life?
So I majored in math and for minor economics, but we also really started a computer science department. So I knew at that time, this is in 77, that computers were sort of the future of the free world. And and I've been, as I tell my, my colleagues, I've been in computers since they were made of wood. It's a long time. And so I worked for a small computer company in Pittsburgh. And that's, and that's how I started. And I worked inside. I was a technical guy that, you know, did presentations, it's technical stuff. But I realized after a very short period of time, these salespeople were making a lot more money than I was. And so I moved quickly, you know, within a year into sales and moved a lot of places. We moved to Michigan. We moved to, we were in Ohio. We were back in Pittsburgh for a short time, the early 80s. As you know, we're in Chicago, Texas. Most of my adult life was in Silicon Valley area in San Francisco. I spent most of my life in that part of the world, Oregon, too. But really on the sales and marketing side of technology. And I always felt that we were providing technical solutions to solve business problems and ended up being a, you know, Silicon Valley CEO and did that, so I sort of retired about 10 years ago, I guess now. And I've been, what I do now is I advise CEOs of early stage tech companies on issues of go to market, personnel, sales, marketing. I have a very, you know, small, albeit boutique business. So I love that. I have clients all over the world. I have clients in France. I have clients in Australia. I have clients in New Zealand. I have clients in Singapore, San Francisco, Wisconsin. So anyway, I guess I enjoyed mentoring. I sort of get paid to mentor at this point. And that's what I do. And I really, really, really enjoy it. And I haven't traveled much in the last year, but up in, you know, I've just given perspective. I think I have I don't know, eight million miles on American Airlines, probably two or three on United and probably another million on Delta. So I lived in France for a while, lived in Japan for a while. So.
So to bring it back to the, to Bethany, because now we have the picture of what you did after Bethany, but you never fully left. So in my time, they named, they named Rekill.
Yeah. So a couple of connections back, you know, when you leave, you're kind of busy with life. Sort of reconnected in a couple of ways. Again, my mom was active with the Alumni Council. What happened then, too, is my oldest son, our oldest son, Matt, graduated from Bethany in 2001. So he graduated from high school in 1997. We took him to a bunch of places to look at schools. He fell in love with Bethany when he saw it, but he wouldn't give us the satisfaction of saying that because he didn't want, you know, this, you know, wanted to keep it to himself. But he decided to go to Bethany. So he went and Junior Man of the Year and all that fun stuff. So we kind of re made a reconnection at that point, back in the late 90s and early aughts there. And then Buck Smith became an interim president of Bethany College. I'm trying to think whether it was early aughts, 2004, five, six, something like that. And, you know, he had asked me to join the Board of Trustees. And, you know, at that point in your life, you're just busy. I mean, busy is an understatement. And
Like you're traveling as much as you did.
It is. But, you know, I thought this is a great opportunity to kind of give back to Bethany. And I'd always, we'd always been donors of Bethany. And I think that made me think, okay, he's giving money. If we put him on the trustees, maybe they'll give more. And anyway, so I did that and truly enjoyed it. I shared student life committee for a long time. And then we hired Tamara and I offered to step down from the chair. I said, you can, we can have new chairs. It's time, maybe, you know, they said, nice try. I said, okay. We don't have an enrollment committee, admissions committee. We should have one. It's a best practice. It's, you know, it's one of our primary areas of revenue and we should have a, so I, so I started the enrollment committee chairmanship. And then various other committees, finance, et cetera. And, and then we began looking for, it was time to, you know, to turn the officers. And I volunteered to help do that earlier this year. And, you know, talked to many board members about this. And the message kept coming back that was, Ken, you should be the chairman. I'm going, no, I'm trying to step back. You know, it's like Godfather III, right?
Every time you're out.
Right. And so anyway, you know, and I really had to give lots of thought, you know, I've been working with Bethany for a long, long time. And, you know, for years, I commuted to the board meetings from San Francisco, which is, you know, hardly a day trip.
No.
Especially with Pittsburgh Airport, you know, became, you know, shrinky and it was connecting flights, et cetera. But I'm excited about the opportunity, you know, where Bethany is. I think during COVID, I'm very proud of what Bethany did. I've worked with many organizations. And those organizations wanted to simply survive during COVID, survived. Those that chose to thrive, thrived. And Bethany thrived. And there's a lot of good things going on. Our freshman class enrollment continues to grow. We're gonna get, you probably know this. If you don't, I may be give you some scoop here. We voted to replace the turf on the, on the field. And knock on wood, that gets done quickly because I pushed that harder in our recent main meeting and say, we gotta get it done. I mean, just because it's, we need to get it done immediately. And because of new fall sport. So excited about that. And just a number, number of good things. We're, you know, going through the passing through our accreditation. We're gonna get, get the loan from USDA, probably in the next 60 days, probably the most, maybe 30 days. But so a number of positive things in place right now.
Well, and you brought up the new turf field that's going in. If you were pitching Bethany, or you were pitching a Division III program, you're talking to, you know, for our area, the Pittsburgh area, you're talking to a lot of kids who grew up playing football or whatever sport that they, they particularly play. Why would you go Division III?
You know, it's for me personally, I, first of all, backtrack this. I have a son who was Division II, was an All-American and he did very well. And he was just great athlete there. It's a different, Division II is like Division I without the money. It is, it is a full-time job, basically, at that level. It is, it is a full-time job basically at that level. Division three, it's, you get a chance to play if, if you want to. It's not like you just fall off the truck and you play, but you got to work hard. It's great teamwork. The schedule's not as long, obviously, as, as, as the other schools. You know, frankly, you're learning an education. What I find about, about Bethany. And one of my fellow trustees, a guy named Bob McCann, who actually is, is, is left the board of trustees, but he was a vice chair at several investment firms, including Merrill Lynch, said Bethany is a place where you, you know, what, what appears to be ordinary blossoms to be extraordinary. And, and I was a perfect for that. I had no idea when I came to Bethany of what I wanted to do other than play football. And I found math and I found computer science and I found tons of leadership opportunities, whether it be with the Fytas as, as a president there, as a president of the math club, as a captain of the track team, all these opportunities for leadership that you didn't even know you had. And that's to me is if you're looking for, and I think, and they also Bethany teaches you how to think, you know, you know, you're, we're not going to technical school where you learn how to, you know, to tighten screws and do that. It gives you opportunity. Look at you yourself. You're an entrepreneur. You're doing this. My hat's off to you and what you're doing. You're taking 21st techno, century technology on a shoestring and making it work. And, and, and you're, and you're growing this business. And that's the thing too, is, is they, the, the students that I talk to even to this day, in fact, when I lived in San Francisco, I would host a Bethany alumni event every summer at San Francisco. And we'd have a different places. And one time we had it, in fact, at AT&amp;T Park, they were playing the Pirates. And whether people graduated in the 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s, the aughts, whatever. This love of Bethany, the opportunities and the importance of, of, they learn from professors and this, just this opportunity to, to be what you want to be, do what you want to do, that confidence is common. And, and people I'd never met in my life, but this cult of Bethany, it's, it's contagious. And that's just about.
Well, that, uh, normally I would have asked why Bethany, but that was a pretty clear answer to why division three and why Bethany. We've come to that point of the show. I got to send it to the other staple of the town of Bethany. Chambers General Store, Harry Chambers, because if Chambers doesn't have it, you don't need it. And if you've ever been to Bethany and never stopped at Chambers, you didn't actually come to Bethany because I don't know how you missed it. But Ken, thank you very much for being on the show. Congratulations on the, on becoming the chair of the Board of Trustees.
Very proud of that. It's a great, it's a great group. And in fact, we're having a sort of summer retreat and we're going to, we're going to have it on campus. Bringing all the board members in and, and looking forward. In fact, those that are interested in staying in college housing, we're going to invite them to do that. And
That's interesting.
Yeah.
Well, this has been Ken Beto class of 1977. I am Carlo Guadino. This is the Dingo Talk Alumni Tour. Harry Chambers, take it away.
You've just watched another exciting episode of Dingo Talk, recorded in the secret lair deep in the hills of Bethany, West Virginia. Let me give a shout out to my man Dunn over at Maple Shade Outdoor. He got some great, he's got some great stuff going on over there on YouTube and Instagram. Please make sure you check him out. Also now available as promised, we have the second edition Bethany, West Virginia mushroom capital of the world t-shirts. And our Chambers General Store. If we don't have it, you don't need it. T-shirts available in all sizes. So make sure you stop by the store for a t-shirt, breakfast sandwich or sausage biscuits and gravy. And make sure to check out those daily lunch specials. Now back to you, Dingo.